When we get.
Are we ready? Good evening, welcome to the special meeting of the Parks and Rec Commission. I'm going to call this meeting officially to order at five o'clock right on the dot. I'm chairman and I am present. I will do roll call. Co-chairman Kramer.
President.
Commissioner Jones.
Here.
Commissioner Keck. And I believe Commissioner Osmanstad is on Zoom. Okay, the first item is public comment. This is the time members of the public may give comment of a general nature. No official action may be taken by the commission during this time unless it is to direct staff to look into a matter. Would anyone like to make a general public comment on an item that is not on the agenda? Anyone here? All right. All right, next one is the introduction of our new commissioner.
So I'll take that. I want to introduce John Jones. He's our newest commissioner to the team. And John, why don't you just kind of give everybody a brief background story on you?
Well, I appreciate being here. Appreciate the opportunity to give back to the community. My wife Sue is in the audience and we live in Mountain Gate. The summer, well, I've been there two years and just absolutely love it here. And just really enjoy the opportunity to, you know, be a part of the Parks and Rec Commission and give back and maybe help a little.
Welcome.
Welcome.
All right, next item is our report. Parks and Rec Director will provide updates on a few things.
Yeah, I have a few updates for you. Just to update on the youth advisor position that we, that you all took a recommendation to council to consider and approve was approved by council. And so we are moving forward with that next step of promotion.
Creating promotional materials and reaching out to appropriate areas to attract
youth and young people to be a part of our mission. The town park, the town park restrooms are nearly complete. We had ordered auto locks so that the locks on the doors will close at a certain time of day and open at a certain time of day.
Kind of eliminating staff time and the particular locks that we were
advised to purchase were, didn't end up being the correct locks. So they are, have ordered us new ones. The thousands are in working order. The doors are working great. It's so nice to be outdoors. They go home of the bathroom. And we are in the process of getting a quote to replace the seats and the and the countertops in there as well. And that should be coming there's the volunteer appreciation event. I just wanted to remind you all, all volunteers in the town of Clarkdale for one year were invited to our volunteer appreciation event. And Cheryl, unfortunately, Chair person, Castle is heading up that committee to give their restaurant. It's a fun event. So Mark and Cal were April 17. By P. You should already have.
Volunteers from 2023.
You volunteered in 2023, correct? Okay, and then our concert in the park flyer, you have them planted here. This is an unapproved document that will go out to the public. It has all of the dates and the bands that were chosen were those specific dates and we're just waiting for our final approval from the town manager. And this will go on our website. It will, we'll start picking the rap cards and all of the promotional materials that we do for for that event. Those events, all of them. And then our, I just, a couple of things that were not on here are events. I wanted to let you know that the Criterion, the Clarkdale Historic Clarkdale Criterion Bike Event is going to happen on April 8. Nope, April 6. April 6. It starts at nine AM and it goes until five thirty. And it takes place on our downtown streets, though we are what we do in the very extensive event where things have to be, the waterways have to be closed off because the bikes will be racing in the downtown here and in the residential. The worker will have more information on that. And that's, that's the, those events, these events fall under our special events, so they're not actually in the purview of the commission. But we want you to be aware of the events and the things that we're working on as well. We also have a beer, a street beer festival hosted by Smelter on May 18. From it's from noon to six on that date. And that's all.
Okay, next item is minutes. Are the minutes, did y'all get a chance to look at them? And do you have any comments, corrections? I have one correction. The, one of the concert dates was incorrect. It said July 29, I think, instead of June, but that's all I noticed. Anybody else? Anybody like to?
I'm making motion to approve the minutes from February 14, 2024 meeting with the one correction noted by Chairperson Castle.
I second that.
All right, all in favor? The motion passes. And the next one is new business, Connected Clarkdale Trails and Active Transportation Plan.
Here. A reminder for John, who's new to our group, I'm just going to give you kind of a brief overview of where we where we started the game and where we are now. In early 23, the town committed to creating a to enhance recreational opportunities and improve our transportation. And that came from a survey showing that 71 residents wanted more walking paths. It came from the 2021 survey from the general plan as the guide to provide access to linkages between open space parks and user-specific destinations. And, and then also we have been working to be a part of the Verde Valley Circle Trail, which is a trail that encompasses 90 miles of connected trails to connect all over the Verde Valley. So we began that process by researching and choosing a consultant to work with us to develop the plan. That was just about a year ago that we started this process and we've come full, full circle now and to have a product that we think is, is really great. The, the goals were to, you know, or the steps were to engage the community, the landowners and develop an implementation framework. The considerations were the geography, the floodplain, the private owners, safety, connected purposes and a public benefit. And these were also things that were used in doing our criteria to rank the trails. And then our goals were, of course, to address the community interests, to increase opportunities for the community. And follow that.
Are you going over your slideshow now or are you?
I'm not yet. I'm just doing the uptake. Okay, thank you. I'll let you know when I move on. And so we, of course, wanted to create, wanted to create a variety of trails for different users to be equitable to consider historic and historic and cultural trails. Most importantly, to provide connectivity. So after that process, we've been working with Logan Simpson during that time. We have created a plan that we think will really, one of our biggest questions was, or request was that we wanted a trail, a trail master plan that we didn't want a pretty plan that would sit on a shelf. We wanted something that we could implement. And we've already begun the implementation process on, on a lot of this. And I think I've shared that with you before. So we're pretty excited about, you know, it's, this isn't going on a shelf. It's going to be worked as everything changes for the community and there's new developments to look at, there's new road improvements are looked at. That's our opportunity to come in and get the things that are in this plan fixed or implemented. And then, of course, we want to continue to work on our, on our earth and trails so that we can, we can move that forward. Or, you know, have that for like a two. I have a little presentation for you, Taylor, who's going to, going to try to be here with us today and it didn't work out. But before that again, I would like to recognize Felicia Coates, our star volunteer, who really is the instigator of this plan. I mean, we've always wanted it, but she was the one who said, I not only want it, but I'm willing to help you get it. And so she stepped in and has helped us and she has a lot to be proud of because she did a lot of it, especially the detail work. The staff didn't really have time to be engaging all of the time. She picked up the pieces and virtually was working full-time during the, it's not a long journey part of this project. So we want to thank for her efforts and I know you need it.
Thank you, Felicia.
I know. These are exciting. Okay, so.
It's on the timer because it's how Taylor sent it. So it's automatically rolling.
So I'm going to have to look pretty fast.
We're talking slowly.
Okay, you can flip to the next slide. And, and not, you can see some of them are very, very out so. So let me just go over this. The Clarkdale, the Connect Clarkdale, which was the name you kind of rolled this whole project into because it's not just about trails, it's about active transportation and connectivity to other communities and connecting to other trails. So the purpose was an activity to transport, was an active transport system to various types of paths and trails and putting connector trails, multi-use paths, pedestrians that walk, bike lanes, bike lanes and routes and nature trails, all combined into a unified network. No. I'm going to go. Would it, would it be easier if I connected my, or the, or the, it's just all on camera? So I'm able to go from page to page.
If you want to check, you can. Otherwise, I'm just going to hit a state and then I'll make it large and say from current slide. Which one are you on? How to?
So I'm looking for the slide with the, you know, to the slide eight. The proof of the process is be the master plan system, yes. So the routes that were considered, so they were all ground truth. And, and of course, the public gave us tons of input on the trails that they wanted to ensure where the routes were organized into two systems. One, a near-term system of trails or transportation avenues that we felt were more achievable in the near-term future than they might be. They might be more complicated. They might, you might have landowner issues, et cetera. So all of the, all of these things were taken into consideration. The long term is focuses on more recreational trails and projects with especially challenging elements such as a bridge over a river. That's not going to be an easy one if we, if we end up designing that. So the proposed trails are either off-street or on-street. And, and they're all listed on page 30 through 33 in your, in your Trails Master Plan. I'm sure you looked at it. It's a different types of trails that, that, that we can, that we can offer, that we plan to offer. Including bicycle, pedestrian, multi-use paths. And considering trail heads, crossings and bridges. Our off-street connectors being our connector trail. Potentially the Verde Valley Purple Trail, the nature, a nature trail and all from the water. So the Connect Clarkdale takes Clarkdale from a few isolated trails to a network of trails that you can see from this map. Logan Simpson did a good job of just kind of giving you a visual to show how we're connecting, you know, Clarkdale from north to south, we're connecting east to west, connecting outside of Clarkdale to Plodwood. We've got it all. The most. So we're really excited about that. If you have any questions with that, go ahead. Don't hesitate to ask me. We'll be good with that. So then the next map is our system, master plan system map, which is, shows the Clarkdale Spur, the Verde Valley Circle Trail. It's represented in the kind of thicker, the free line on the map. The centerfield trails that aren't currently, there's some social trails over there, but there's a good opportunity for us to to work on those trails, providing the landowners willing to work with us and connect those to other trails. The northwest area is multi-use paths connecting here from the school, nature, Yawapachin Nation. That's where we're already starting to implement pieces of this plan on those projects. The Cement Plant Road project around the corner to main to the school, on main to the school. It will connect to the Clarkdale Parkway and, and the multi-use paths. So along with a, the pipeline example sites. So that's, that's that area, that northwest area. The Ultron Highway corridor, which is the western edge of town. That one is connects to Yawapach College, the Ultron Highway piece that connects to Yawapach College. And then essentially to the blowout wash trail system and beyond because that, that already is growing. That trail system is already growing kind of toward me. Yes, so. The eastern side is a same basic theme. Being across South Broadway project where they're already doing that work. I'm sure if you come down that way, you can and see that work actually working this way on the train house. And then the river access points, trails and that there. So after we identified the routes and we had to go, okay, how are we going to prioritize these? And so we had a criteria of options to use. The financial viability was very important. Even though we included some that have high financial capability, but we, but there, those are most likely in the long-term plan. So that would be over, over time. We wanted to make sure we satisfied an immediate need if there was a health or safety need on the trail. If it was benefit-driven, in other words, if there's already a project company in that area we can tie into. For instance, the Clarkdale Parkway, potentially, which if there's some new development there, then we work with that developer to to get them to help us with, with that opportunity because then it leads people into town and it's, it's a good amenity for their project. So, and then, of course, it's especially significant to the community. So it came up a lot in our conversations. As we were engaging with the community over, you know, that whole time that we were doing that piece. That was also considered how important it was to, to them. And if we could leverage resources and partnership opportunities, kind of like the benefit-driven as well. And then if it was opportunity-driven, which, I'm sorry, that's opportunity for them, is leveraging the resources. So those were all the things that we considered throughout the, the process. And moving on to we, so we narrowed it down to 11 projects, not two, but 11 priority projects. The plan acknowledges that recordings can and should be reevaluated annually. So just because these 11 are on there now, it's a good idea to, you know, pull this back out and take a look, see where, you know, hopefully we're going to be keeping track as we go as to what, what we're chugging off. But then sharing that with you all as to where, where we are and then potentially doing a reevaluation. Something may change. A landowner who didn't want to be involved at some point, or who didn't want to be involved now, at some point that may change for them. So those are all the things that staff will be looking at continually in our conversations with, with others. And as products come up. And then the 11 priority projects, the connectivity needs within Clarkdale. And so, yeah. Opportunities are easier to implement due to their location. They're being called the right way or a town owned. So that's what we're, that's what we're getting at, those priority and challenge properties developed. And then this is the path to implementation. It, the plan puts up a walking range of framework, a trail, an active transportation projects and recommendations to guide decision-making. So again, we'll be using that. So we started with establishing partnerships. We moved to land or easement acquisition. We'll secure funding. We'll design and engineer and construct and maintain and manage. So these are all the steps into implementation that we all have to, you know, follow and give consideration to as we go along. Yeah. And I hope you all got a chance to look through the plan. I know it is, is deep, it is hefty and but, you know, now we can have a discussion about I feel obviously what our goal tonight is to adopt this plan as a recommendation to the council to do a production. And it does go to council, it was being in April. So are there any questions?
Have any questions, but what a big job. And thank you, Felicia. That was amazing. And for everybody, yeah, that's very comprehensive and impressive. We could do, do you want me to do a call to the public to see if anybody has? Anybody, you can do a call to the public, you can make a comment of a general nature. We can't act on it. Anybody? Okay.
I've been able to, you know, be at several of the engagement events, obviously. So we've seen this multiple times and I know that there have been a lot of important pivots to, you know, keep it on track. So it's not the draft that is before us today is, is the product of like a lot of work far beyond just the initial work. And so I really do appreciate that, that a lot of the things that were talked about in our earlier meetings with Logan Simpson, you know, were taken into account and so many of the comments were also included. So it's good. I'm excited. I think it will be a very useful document moving forward.
Thank you. I would like to add that there, there is an appendix, as you probably noticed, to this document. So there are items that potentially it, it kind of shows our process, our roadmap on how we got to where we are. But it also contains some things that maybe have to be removed from the plan for whatever reason. But we have a little bit of a documentation there that, that way it's still somewhere. So some future date, someone may go, you know, because there were things that are no longer there and primarily due to landowner concerns. And so we had to work closely with Logan Simpson, had to do a lot of changes to get this plan to where, where we needed it to be today. So, so know that we, we not only have the, the external document, we have an internal document that we, anything, any conversation to we just have some notes on the back, on the backside for us in going to the future if we need to. Or something, move back the information.
Great.
It's great. I'm so excited.
So having come into this process, obviously, like do we foresee, I know funding is always an issue. Are there any other obstacles that we foresee that would preclude any major parts of this from taking place?
Oh, yeah, most certainly. I mean, we've done our best to map out what, you know, we think are, we couldn't possibly go through and check every trip for viability. But we, you know, use a lot of resources to kind of weigh that and most definitely something could come up in the future either that opens up an opportunity, a new opportunity, or that maybe changes an opportunity we thought we could have. So it really, you know, when it's not our property, and that's why I said, you know, right away, our business golden. Because we can do anything in our, on our property. But when it involves other landowners, it's definitely going to, you know, it's going to depend on them working with us and us working to build that relationship. So they feel better.
Thank you.
Good question.
Anybody else have any discussion, comments? So staff is recommending that we approve this final plan that they can take to council so that they can approve it. Does anybody want to make a motion?
I'll move to approve final draft will connect Clarkdale Trails and Active Transportation Master Plan with a recommendation to council for approval.
I can second that.
It's been moved by Coach Kramer and seconded by Commissioner Keck. All in favor?
I.
Oh, do we do?
Okay.
It's just.
Okay, so Coach, Coach here.
Robin, Robin, did you have something to say?
No, I thought you.
Okay, so it's like you're reading your hand. Okay.
Oh, I was just, yeah, I got you. I got you. Okay.
Oh, she's up there. Commissioner, Commissioner Osman, what's your vote?
I vote I to approve. Coach Eric Kramer. I do as chairman. Commissioner Keck.
I.
And Commissioner.
I.
It unanimously passes. Great.
Thank you.
Next one is a discussion item only on Salem Monjeany Park updates.
Awesome. Many of you were able to defend our open house that we had last week. What a great success. And we were super excited to have the public come out and look at. Open house that we had last week, what a great success. We were super excited to have the public coming out and look at, look at a plan that. We hoped it had, you know, it's pretty much our final plan going in, but we received a lot of public comments. And we we wanted that, we enlisted that for, even though I haven't planned out to the public for quite some time. We, you know, since we're getting construction drawings real soon, we wanted to be sure that we had all the redbacks in the road. And so with the. Let me back up for just a second, the the budget for this project. May end up exceeding the. The actual, no, let me back up. The actual cost of the project may exceed the actual budget that was submitted to state parks. And therefore, we will be looking at doing value engineering on the project, which means that we're gonna. Need to go in and look at the whole project and say, okay, how short are we and what might we need to consider? Making a change on. We we heard that was our another idea of engaging the public. Because then the public can help us, what do you like best, what do you like least? And then when we have to make those hard decisions, if we have to. We're reasonably sure it's gonna be about thirty percent more to build, to build the park than it was budgeted in twenty twenty one. But when when we have to do that, we've got to guide from the public as to what. They would, what they liked and what they didn't like, so then you can help, that'll help make us help make that decision. So I think we gave you a copy of, yes, you have in front of you, just a copy of some of the comments that we got. We had close to fifty people actually attended once we got down to the count. And which was just a great. I mean, we we've had that many people come out for the trails map to plan too, and that just doesn't, that doesn't happen all the time, so. That's a good sign for you all to know that the community is really involved in recreation for for our area and. And and they're on board with, you know, with what we're doing, so when they're coming out, we'll ask them, ask them questions and give them awesome comments. We have so many, in fact, even even those who who had specific things that they didn't really care for. They still commented on why they think the park. So that was in like, that was made us very happy because, you know, this, as you know, it's been a really long process. So I just wanted to to have you be able to look at what the kind of where the comments landed. I don't, we don't, I don't think we need to necessarily go through them, we do know, but we've got the summary of. Of lower Parkdale residents and their specific requests. For what what they like to visit and what they like the least, and you can see from the list that the pickleball courts were definitely the top story in what. People like the least about the park. So as we go through our value engineering, that will be a consideration. I mean, not that sort of process and that, you know, we're just gonna, you know. Kind of go go through it and see how short we are and what we're gonna have to need to make changes. But that will be obviously a consideration based on its kind of.
Well, one read, I I mean, I think that I have on that is that when we started talking about the spark, I mean, now years ago. There existed practically nowhere to flip the ball, like within the valley. And now it exists multiple places in Codewood, multiple places in Parkdale and everything else, so, you know, it could be that because of that. You know, the priority level of it has shifted with the community to say, hey, you know, what, where was something that we didn't, you know, that we weren't gonna have anywhere in town? Well, now we have it at Copper Penny Park, now we have Centerville Park, now Codewood has a number of courts. So maybe that, maybe the the balance has shifted as far as the neighborhood, so. I mean, that was kind of the, from hearing some of the comments that people were sharing, that was maybe, maybe what I had observed, you know? That it was less, I mean, it's obvious that people enjoy it very much and they they get well used at some of the other places, but. Even like you spoke to at the meeting the other night, you know, the the distance at some of those other locations is further away from where people are trying to reside, so.
A little bit. Centerville actually is a little closer, actually a little closer than these, but I think it's because of the way the the park is laid out.
It sits a little bit lower, it sits lower, it's a big brick, yeah.
It is, it is a little different. So and that was a big part of the conversation when we initially started this, it was the community. Just came out of the woodwork going, we need pickleball courts, we need pickleball, so we put them in there and. And and we did do, we have been putting the spark out to the public for quite some time to, you know, comment on. Beyond the public house for the last couple of years, where we got it to a place that we needed changes or. We started the conversation again, like we're almost there with our grant. And we didn't have any feedback to that at that time, so we're, you know, at that point, we're thinking, okay. This this is still what everybody wants because we come through to the contrary. So then when when this meeting took place naturally. As the plan went out to the lower Parkdale residents, the literature for the meeting, we began getting messages. We had some emails and conversations with folks and then, of course, these, and and those are actually included in that. Number twelve, that twelve pickleball court concerns. And so and and the other thing that is really important for you to know is, and we did reach out to our grant. A grant administrator and to say, you know, okay, now we'll have a public who doesn't like something in our park and. So, you know, can we just take that out of the park? And the answer is we can if it doesn't fit within our budget. But because the grant covered, you know, we have our grant plan and that was what was turned in and what we were funded on. If we make some changes to that, we're still actually not a hundred percent sure what that's gonna look like and if we're gonna, if we would even be able to do that. But it will be a part of the conversation future, back timing to see what it's, what if it comes down to that. Honestly, I think once we get the numbers and we, we're working with the with the engineers, the engineer engineering firm. And the landscape designer now to actually get us the final today numbers to build the park after this. So that we can do that value engineering and determine what what we're gonna need to, what we're gonna need to take out. It's anything, depending on the number.
One thing that surprised me and I guess I just hadn't thought about it before, but. Was that, I mean, I just think of all the parks as having kind of a. Like a barbecue space? And I noticed that this one, it doesn't seem like that was included and I, and I don't know, I I mean. When I think of all, like of the other parks, I just assume that it's there or, you know, like, and that seems to be something that people enjoy, but. I didn't see it included in this plan, was there? I don't know, there was just something that occurred to me and I know it's, you know, it's, we're we're nearing the end of this part of the process, but.
That's a really, really good question. It was not considered for the for this particular. Area and a grant under this grant, because we do have them available in the upper end of the park.
Okay.
There are two with the current hermodas that are there, we have two, we have a barbecue grill that we want. And so we thought that was, until someday the public says, hey, we really want to have one. Somewhere else, we decided to put that money toward.
But that's not something so hard to add or change if there's a lot of public support for it under. Excellent.
I think so. Yeah, so it's just, you know, if there's any other questions or. Once, once we have that engineering or the cost estimate for the park, then, you know. We'll just take it from there and figure out what what we'll need based on what the public has.
Will we take it back to the public or to ask about pickleball? I mean, no. Okay. I just know it was getting popular in two thousand and eleven when I retired from teaching PE and now it's huge.
Yeah.
And I think it's just gonna get bigger.
Yeah, I I agree with you, Commissioner Kek, I think. That it is definitely something that we can consider for another location, a future location. That is, would be less impacted by residents who really don't want it in their park.
I I just wonder, I mean, is there some place in that area that it could be moved to and something could change?
In the same park?
The same park away from the houses?
Pretty much with the way that park's laid out, because it's all long. In the shape right along along this way, anywhere within that park is is.
Still close.
To the houses, so, you know, that's and that will be a consideration, but again, we gotta talk to, we gotta see our numbers. And then, and then we need to talk to state parks again and see what what our options are. When you sign an agreement with state parks, it's, you know, we we need to.
Yeah, I will. Okay, we could do another call to the public if anyone wants to limit it to five minutes.
Hi, hi, Joni and hi, council members. Thanks for all your great work and wow, that trail system just sounds amazing and so exciting. And so I really appreciate especially, and you know, Felicity, wow, really wonderful. I am attached to that park down there and so. The pickleball courts are a big issue because of the noise and it's been, no one was really aware what the issue was since all the lock. Suits have come up in the cities and it's just been since they've been. Changed from either tennis courts or something like that. And there's, if you Google tennis pickleball noise, you'll see that it's it's just becoming a huge nightmare for a lot of cities and people. And it's because it has a different kind of sound and. It's it's a, you you can't, they don't recommend putting them between five and six hundred feet in for housing. And we have neighbors like fifty feet away. So if you're three hundred and fifty feet away, you need sound abatement. And then any closer than that, you need twelve foot walls, up to twelve foot walls, so there, a lot of people are digging them way down and. Brimming it up and putting walls and it just doesn't sound like anything, in my opinion, Parkdale should do, because. It's gonna be very expensive, then none of the neighbors want it that are around the park that are aware of all these kind of things, and this is just an example. It's the city of Centennial, Colorado. And they have an emergency basically noise abatement pickleball ordinance because it's been an issue. And I gave that to the council members, because I mean, a lot of people just aren't aware. I wasn't aware till I started looking at it. And I talked to from Spenderian and Willis Acoustics and Noise Control. They can do a study and they're pretty reasonable for another location or something like that and. They basically said this is a no go in this park anywhere. And, you know, the name is Lance Willis and he's done projects up in Prescott and all over the state, so. That's my comment, there's no one that really wants it there, I understand, and if you're having a pavilion that may have weddings and stuff like that, I don't think you want pickleball. Noise and there's already new things going in there that haven't been there before, like the zip lines and there's gonna be a bathroom and a pavilion that has events. And two playgrounds instead of one and horseshoes, there's already gonna be a lot of things going on in there and then. Plus a bigger basketball court, so to add that on top of it in an area that really is. A quiet area and people really like being there because of that, I just think it's. Cause would cause a lot of problems and noise and. And so that's my comments, I really love all the work that Joni and Shell and everybody has done on the park and I really appreciate it. But we're really asking as a neighborhood surrounding it not to put those in and especially with the increased costs and. You know, the pavilion and the other things are gonna be expensive and might as well really do a nice job on those. And so that's just my comment. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I could make make a comment about Ms. Jackson's comment about the noise abatement and that was something that. We have had a conversation about and what that would look like if we wanted to try that. And it may still be a place we need to go if if we're, for whatever reason, not. Not able to remove them and stay within our grant guidelines is that we would look at that. At a payment process. It's not, it would be very costly, which would actually add to the project. And so, you know, we'll just have to see without that, so. But we we definitely have heard from the public on what their. Designers.
So is there, maybe this isn't the right. Also, lights, are they, would they be on timers or how are lights? Because I know we're in a dark sky community and elaborate a little bit on that.
Um, thank you, that's a great question. We did plan for lights for the pickleball courts. And they're doing amazing things with lighting now because everybody is considering dark sky. So they're very, they're they're LED, they're very efficient, they're very, they're like, they get right down onto the court and not. You know, go out into all other areas of the park and they, yes, they would be on a timer and there would be a hard shut off time. So they could be used until, you know, whatever time you determine and then they would not be able to come back on the rest of the evening.
And even if there are no pickleball courts, I mean, assuming there's still gonna be some type of lighting there, will that be handled the same way?
Well, there there wouldn't, we've put in any lighting at the pickleball courts there, there is additional lighting planned for the park, however. And we're, we're still kind of assessing that and. Right now, we have planned for the street, like our streetlights, we have the old fashioned.
Oh, yeah.
Home that comes down, so the light shines directly down. And we do have a plan for that for several of those along the inner path of the park so that folks can walk during the evening. And, you know, but but we can also consider other other lights, but that's what we put in, that's what we consider for our grant.
Anything else on that? Right, how about any future agenda items?
Well, with the concerts coming up, we had talked. At the end of last season about maybe developing some sort of training. For ticket sellers or table staffers or something like that. I just, you know, we're a little ways out, I mean, I don't know if, you know, Jim Mas can do an informational video or something. But maybe just some orientation tips, some something quick or. Because a lot of times people show up at the table and they're like, I'm here to volunteer, but I don't know what to do.
Right.
And it's, and if you're at the table, that's, you don't really have the, you know, faculty to like get up and go show them how to do everything. Um, maybe that's something to think about, but I don't know, as as we're getting closer. We're gonna staff at this same probably again with.
Yeah.
Volunteerism from the commission.
I'll be sending out emails soon to get the dates that you guys are available and then we can go from there to get volunteer, to get sellers and.
And we, yeah, and we do have. We have Bailey now, additional example. Be able to spread.
She wants all the concerts.
A little further, yeah.
She wants to do all the.
She was great last year, I mean, we just threw her in there. The others?
Or any objection to adjournment? Um, all right, well, no objections, we will adjourn at five fifty.